Good evening to this meeting of the Livermore City Council on Monday, February 22nd. And I know it's the 22nd because it's my daughter's birthday, and I'm also thrilled to see other daughters in the room tonight that are going to represent us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the colors in just a second. First, I'd like to call a roll and note all members are attended except for Mayor Marchand, who is out of state, excused, speaking at a conference. And with that, I'd like to introduce a variety of Girl Scouts who are going to come forward in a moment and help do three things: present the colors, the Pledge of Allegiance, and you all know how to stand during that. And then we also have a proclamation that Councilmember Turner will read as an ex-Girl Scout, always a Girl Scout.
Always a Girl Scout.
As always a Girl Scout, will read proclaiming Girl Scout Month. With that, I'd like to introduce, and sorry if I butcher your names, I'll try not to: Vienna Meany from Troop 33628, Frances Thornberry from 33630, Eleanor Thornberry, there's a sister act in the room, from the same troop, Charlotte Plemons from 32874, Jessica Plemons, another sister act, from Troop 31004, and Alice Offerhide, if I'm close, from Troop 3674. Would you please come forward, and would the audience rise as we present the colors?
Color Guard, post the colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Girl Scouts, please join me in the Girl Scout Promise. On my honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people at all times, and to live by the Girl Scout Law. Please be seated.
And now, Councilwoman Turner will do the honors with the proclamation.
What an honor. As my peers up here know, I'm avid about, excited about Girl Scouts. And for those of you that may not know, the majority, I think it's like over 95 percent of all female CEOs in our country were at one time Girl Scouts. It's an excellent organization, teaches you lifelong skills. I love seeing the age group differences here, it's fantastic. So, thank you for coming, and I have a few words that are printed on here for me to read. Whereas on March 12th, 1912, Girl Scouts of the United States was founded in Savannah, Georgia by Juliette Gordon Lowe, with the goal of bringing girls out of isolated home environments and into community service and the open air, and, whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl scouting has helped build millions of girls' courage, confidence, and character through leadership development, taking action, and connecting with their communities. In Girl Scouts, girls discover the fun, friendship, and power of Girls United Together to make the world a better place. And whereas, the Girl Scout organization has succeeded through the dedication, time, and talent of volunteers of different backgrounds and areas of expertise. And whereas, during Girl Scout Week, more than 2.7 million Girl Scout members nationwide celebrate 104 years of this American tradition, with the over 59 million women who grow up participating in Girl scouting and who exemplify the impact of this valuable program. Now therefore, the city, excuse me, the City Council of the City of Livermore hereby proclaims March 6th through March 12th, 2016, as Girl Scout Week, and recognizes the contributions of the Girl Scouts to the Livermore community. Thank you all, and would somebody like to, probably all of them.
Will all of you like to come forward for a photo with the council, please?
[laughter] Seriously, Dad?
[applause]
And the best part of the year?
Oh, I was hoping we would like skip that. No.
Once a year, once a year.
And they don't have to get to the city clerk.
No, and we don't have Trey Brownie.
And I happen to know that an entire box of tagalongs is 175 percent of your saturated fat. And I know that, because after eating an entire box, I looked at it and was just, oh, I can't believe I ate that much. But it's worth it, totally worth it. I think I'm on my fifth box so far this year.
Well, we all appreciate our donated box of cookies.
We have plenty of other people over here.
We hope all of you watching at home are doing your part to buy cookies this month and support your scouts.
I'm certain that there's a couple policemen that would be happy to help you take care of those cookies. They don't look too upset about that prospect.
[inaudible]
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. And now, while we're on a humanities roll, the next agenda item is Kevin Gunn, our lawyer, is going to bring us up to speed on what he's been doing this year. Kevin?
Thank you, Councilman Gary, and the rest of the council members and their VIPs in the city. This last year was a year I was focusing primarily on trying to teach poetry to our elementary school children, and I got to teach lessons in eight of our grammar schools last year, and had good experiences there with the students. This year, I'm going to focus on middle school students and trying to do poetry at that level. While we continue to do the Teen Poet of the Month contest for high school students, that's been continuing for the last couple of years. So, trying to encourage young people to write was my main emphasis when I took this position. We've also continued the Ravenswood Poetry Series, bringing well-known poets from Northern California to feature here in Livermore at Ravenswood, and it's become a very popular event. We had four of those, and we had good attendance for all those Ravenswood events. I did a poetry workshop for seniors over at Heritage Estates. My wife and I were invited to participate in the San Jose Art Museum Poetry with six other Bay Area poets to choose art in the museum and write poems about the art pieces, and then present our poems to the audience a few weeks later. So, that was a good experience. We also wrote some poems for the city, one about the Centennial Lightbulb that I read at the celebration last year, a poem for the new dedication of the Air Terminal Building, and then one for the, excuse me, for the gazebo that's been built, but I guess will be read later on this year, I was told. So, the last thing I can mention is that I was part of the East Beats West Program, wrote four poems for that event, which was pretty well received as well. So, this year, the focus is on middle school kids and also on trying to bring cowboy poets a little more for the rodeo this year in June. And I just got that going today with some contacts with the city. So, hopefully, we'll ask some cowboy poets to participate in this year's rodeo. That's my hope, anyway.
Very nice, Kevin. We really appreciate what you do, especially the involvement with youth in the schools. Any questions of Kevin tonight?
Thank you, guys.
Good evening. Thank you. Now, it's time for the Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity to address the council on matters not otherwise on the published agenda. Tonight, you have three minutes to do so, and in no particular order. David, if I'm pronouncing right, McGygan?
Close enough.
Close enough, thank you, David. Give those to the city clerk, would you please?
Please.
Okay.
I had a statement that I was going to read, but I decided I'm going to talk about this a little differently, because we've had some conversations, an email at least, the mayor and I have. As you know, I've just presented a letter to the board discussing some of the events that occurred on January 25th, and again on February 8th and 9th, which I have some serious questions about. And finally, in letter, I asked that this board consider asking for a review of these actions by the district attorney, because I'm quite concerned about them and if I laid them out. My question really for here is, I'd just like to know whether or not that request is going to be considered, because, you know, I can stop by and drop my letter off to the district attorney on the way home, and I'm going to mail my card to my son-in-law for his birthday, and I'd just rather soon get it into the mail sooner rather than later. There did seem to be some question about whether or not I am a Measure BB proponent, hater, whatever. I don't really care. I did have occasion to look into the measures, just because it was brought up. You'll see some applauding in that packet as well, just because I was gathering the data, and I thought I'd put it there. It kind of shows by city, the per capita return to that city for each of the Measure B and Measure BB, that's the two numbers there. You kind of see that Livermore is, for whatever reason, only getting about 62 percent on the dollar on the average given out to the cities. I'm sure the number works out that way. It's kind of surprising that Piedmont actually gets way more than their per capita average of $22 or $20 apiece. It just presents the information in an interesting way, and so I thought I'd pass it on to you. Thank you.
Thank you, David. We appreciate your research and interest, and as you know, we can't comment at this point, but perhaps later in our matters initiated. Next, I have, it must be baseball season, David Wetmore and Bill Abumrad.
Good evening, council and staff. With me tonight, both Kathleen Minzer and Bill Abumrad from our World Series Committee. Just want to give you a little bit of an update on, it's going to be our fourth year already, and we're excited. Eleven teams are going to be coming to us, five international, and six from the U.S. champions, the regional champions, and they're going to arrive on Friday, July the 29th. Our tentative parade, an opening ceremony around the Bankhead Theater, scheduled for Saturday, July the 30th, with games beginning on Sunday, July the 31st. The exciting item this year is, traditionally the last three years, our championship game has been on Saturday night. This year, we've been moved to Sunday, August the 7th, at 5:00 PM Pacific Time, and we are replacing the MLB ESPN Sunday Night Game on ESPN versus ESPN2. We're very excited about that. A lot of that is a result of last year, I believe we were shown in 82 countries during our livestream, and equally, through about 225,000 households during the championship game on ESPN2. We're also here just to get the word out that any marketing and advertising that we can get from our partners, we really appreciate that. As all sponsorship dollars that we get go back into the community and the Max Bear Facility, also to help out with the lodging costs that we put together for the 11 teams, we have to feed those hungry little guys and umpires that come into us during the week, transport the teams, and then facility upgrades. This year, we're looking at new bleachers on the first baseline. We'd like to pave the entire complex. There's a lot of seniors and people that walk in there all year, and you know how gravel is, it doesn't always work with walking, let alone baby strollers. Some lights, we're very big on the safety end of it with the lights and some shade structures, a storage building. Technology upgrades, we're going to keep trying to upgrade the facility as the livestream was so important last year. And then depending on the revenues generated, I think the exciting part, we're looking at possibly running a shuttle from our hotels and the complex to downtown, to the outlet mall, and of course, beautiful wine country and stuff like that. So, if there's any questions, we just want to come here and say thank you again. The partnership with the city is fantastic, and I know on behalf of Little League Baseball in Williamsport, where there are nine World Series, we all know about Williamsport, but there's seven others in baseball and softball, we've grown to be the second fastest and largest in our first three years. So, thank you very much.
Now, thank you to you three. I think I speak on behalf of all four of us. We all sat here and remember when you first raised your hands and said, "We want to do this," and I'm sure more than one person in town said, "Really? Really? We can be a Little League site?" And not only have you done it, you've blown the roof off it, and we know you three are just the tip of an enormous volunteer spirit, and we really appreciate what you're doing for the youth and the overall community. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. As we get updates, we'll keep coming back to staff, and you see a little bit of the program that we had last year, and it'll be bigger and better this year. So, we thank you for the support.
Very good.
Thanks.
Next, I have Russ Morgan. Russ?
Councilmembers? I'm here just on behalf of our company to see if we can't have you reconsider allowing us to have the rental down with Party or Elegant Party Downtown. We've tried real hard to put together something that is unique to the city in that it's a full-blown party supply store, but it would make it so much easier for all of us, and we petition, we have quite a few people that have signed a petition that said how much nicer it would be if we had it all in one location and not in two, where they have to go to one location for one thing and one location for another. The parking is so much better where we're at, and if you've gone by or gone in, you'd see how elegant it is. We've done a little bit different in that we're not going to be exactly like Party City, but we're going to be a step up, and that's what we've done. And if you've seen the front area of our facility, you would see that we've done that. So, again, we're asking you to reconsider the decision that you've made for not allowing us to do that, because in everybody that's come in there, and there's over 100 people that have signed the petitions, you've got some from previous, but not one, obviously they're going to sign it if they want to go with it, but we've had excellent response from people when they come in, and they say, "This is so elegant and so nice." So, I would invite you to come and see it, and I would like to ask that maybe the council take up possibly reconsidering the decision. Now, I've talked with the mayor on several occasions, he wanted things done, and we've done it, such as there were vehicles in back, we moved a container, and so it's virtually, the site is now clean totally. So, other than the people coming in and doing the environmental, which seems to be a problem right now, but anyway, that's all I'm asking, and to reconsider what you've done, because it, it's a great facility, and we're getting bigger. We're going to have 10,000 square feet of party supply, bigger than Party City, even the new one. But it's all along the lines of elegant stuff, part of that was like wedding supplies, catering supplies, floral. So, it's a one-stop shop, and it just makes so much sense to be able to drive down and get your rental there as well, plus move us out of downtown, which has always been a hassle to the staff, you know, parking and storage. There is no storage outside, and this facility could provide for people during the rain weather to drive through the building and get their stuff and not have to get it outside. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a state-of-the-art, it would be a state-of-the-art party supply and rental, and it just, it does not make sense why the decision was one way versus another, and everybody seems to think the same thing. So, I'm just asking the council to reconsider.
Thank you for your input. Would you please give the petition to the city clerk, and she'll be sure it's distributed to staff.
I have one question. I don't know how many people you want us to sign, but I mean, we can go into the community and get more, or into the community and get more.
As you know, we can't comment at this point in the meeting, so please give it to staff, and talk to Mr. Kiefer about the actual procedural steps, please. Thank you. Next, we have Connie Cops.
Hello. I hope President Obama picks you for our Supreme Court Justice. I want to thank you for alluding to the fact that there has been some politics on, you know, the Springtown situation. I'm concerned, because I see kids walking and playing in, like, on the golf course part, like it's a park, and I also occasionally run into a stubborn golfer golfing, and that might become dangerous at a given point in time. I'm encouraging everybody that has a stake in our community developing as a whole to really look at the history of Springtown, how it developed, how the golf course was acquired, when it was acquired, and which portions were acquired at what times. I think that confusion has really, I think a lot of decisions that have been made about Springtown were actually made on what people sort of thought was supposed to happen to Springtown. When I went to the meeting at the Alx Club, I know that the city council planners talking, the planners talking at that meeting said, "They didn't know a darn thing about anything, because one guy said he was only eight when the golf course agreements were made." You know, I have aging parents, you know, they're not that old, they're like 80, you know, okay? And they bought their house in the 50s. They have a deed for that house. There's parameters that they need to work within when they sell this house. I'm asking to be forthcoming about anything that happens in Springtown from now on. I'm asking that, you know, if you have a building, a bunch of buildings that are going to go up high, that they don't go through at 10:30 at night, when most of our people are sleeping, and I'm going to ask very courteously to the people that are pushing their agendas about our neighborhood now, that they send information via U.S. Mail if they want to do anything to our property, and get the homeowners that live on that golf course on board and not behind other homeowners' backs. And I thank you so much for taking this seriously. I am really serious about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. And last but not least, Don Meeker, we're assuming in your city historian role, or not? On a full moon Monday night, what do you have for us?
Well, I was going to comment first about the gorgeous full moon that I always see when it's full coming up the horizon, and I'm your ex-city historian, because I didn't renew the position. However, I still do and enjoy Livermore history. This is an article from the Livermore Journal, October 29th, 1931. Discussion of the Unemployment Situation in Livermore Occupied Most of the Time of the City Council at Its Meeting Monday Evening. Jobs Have Been Manufactured for a Certain Number of Residents of the City Who Find Themselves Without Employment. A Certain Amount of Repair Work Being Planned for the City Streets in Order to Provide an Income for Those Out of Work. Leveling, Sweeping, and Oiling Streets Instead of Being Done with Power Broom, Etc., Will Be Done by Hand in Order to Make Two Jobs Grow Where Only One Job Grew Before. Mayor F.C. Lassen Is Acting in Accord with President Hoover's Unemployment Relief Program, Which Advocates Each Community Taking Care of Its Own Residents and Furnish, As Far As Is Possible, Employment for Those in That Immediate Vicinity. This Plan, If Carried Out, Will Prevent Migrations of Jobless Men From One City to Another, in the Vain Hope of Securing Employment. If Every Man Stays in His Own Hometown, and Each Town Attempts to Provide Employment for Its Own, the Country Would Benefit as a Whole More Quickly Than if Great Numbers Flacked a Certain Few Centers. Franklin D. Roosevelt, elected in 1933, developed a program for relief, recovery, and reform, known as the New Deal, and involved a great expansion of the role of the federal government in the economy. I see the word "deal" on it, I think about a deck of cards, and I'm thinking every election, maybe they reshuffle the cards, but I won't go there. The rest is history. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Now, we'll move on to the consent calendar. These are items that are considered routine in nature and acted upon under one vote by the city council. Do any members of the council have anything they wish to pull or comment on? Seeing none, do we have any speaker cards, Madam City Clerk? No? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
I'll second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, we'll go on to the first public hearing, item 501, a hearing to consider an economic development subsidy to Architectural Glass and Aluminum Incorporated for a high-wage incentive agreement pursuant to our city's economic incentive program. Staff?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Gary. I have a short report for you, if you'd like to hear a verbal report on this.
We would, thank you.
So, before you, before you, for your consideration is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a high-wage incentive agreement between the City and Architectural Glass and Aluminum Company. Architectural Glass began its operations in Livermore in 2013. At that time, the city had an established program that provided an incentive for businesses which locate high-wage jobs to Livermore. At that time, or at the time of the move, they applied to participate in the program. Also at that time, the city's program allowed the city manager to enter into related agreements. However, since that time, the state has passed a law which requires local jurisdictions to hold a hearing when considering these types of incentive programs. Subsequently, the council adopted a resolution terminating the high-wage incentive program. The resolution was passed last November. It allowed, it did allow a company which had already applied for the program to proceed so long as the agreement to participate was finalized within six months of the November date. Architectural Glass is the only company which meets these criteria. The incentive program, as it was structured, allowed the city to reimburse a business $1,000 annually for every high-wage job created within the city. The maximum annual reimbursement is $25,000, and the maximum term is five years. And staff is available for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions, staff? Any comments from the applicant?
No.
Okay. Any speaker cards, Madam Clerk? No speaker cards. Hearing that, I'll entertain discussion and a motion.
Do we have to open the hearing?
Well, yeah, I sort of kind of did open the public hearing, there's no speaker cards, but I'll open the public hearing. No one's jumping up. I'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, on to matters for consideration, item 601, a resolution authorizing appropriation and expenditure of general funds in the amount of $100,000 for the purchase of automated license plate reader systems by the police department. Chief and Captain, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor and Council and Community. I'm here tonight to give a presentation on automated license plate readers. ALPR technology that can be used in a variety of ways and is widely used by law enforcement agencies. Common uses include locating stolen or wanted vehicles, to locate missing children, like Amber Alerts, or missing elderly adults, like Silver Alerts, and to protect the public during special events or large public gatherings, and to protect critical infrastructure. An ALPR system consists of digital camera that is able to take rapid photographs of vehicle license plates. Once a photograph is taken, the image is used to compare the photographed license plate to a database of wanted vehicles. If there is a match, an alert is sounded in the officer's car or in the dispatch center. The alert contains a vehicle license plate, a photograph of the vehicle, the date and time a photograph of the vehicle, the date and time and location of the photograph, or that the photograph was taken. A big component of any ALPR system is the database of wanted vehicles and the database of collected information from the ALPR readers. The data collected by the ALPR reader is limited to the vehicle license plate number, a photograph of the vehicle, the date, time, and location of the photograph, and information regarding the identity of the driver, the registered owner of the vehicle, or the owner, or the owner of the vehicle is not contained in the ALPR database. The data collected is stored in the Northern California Regional Intelligence Center for a period of one year unless it becomes part of a criminal investigation. NICRIC is a fusion center for the Northern District of California. Their role is to provide support to law enforcement agencies through collaboration, cooperation, and information sharing across jurisdictions in Northern California. The data is stored in a secure facility with twenty-four-seven physical security, and the server is protected by the latest dual authentication technology providing robust data security. The information is encrypted when it leaves the readers and is stored on servers at NICRIC. LPD does not store any information onsite. Access to information stored at NICRIC is only granted to agencies who agree to the NICRIC privacy policy. There are some privacy concerns regarding the use of ALPR systems. In order to address some of the concerns, strict guidelines have been put into place. Access to ALPR data is controlled, and only those who have a unique username and password are allowed to search the database. Each search is recorded and can only be conducted if the officer has both the need to know and the right to know. This language is found in other access programs and means the officer must have a legal reason to search the database. NICRIC audits a search to ensure compliance with the policy. Livermore could benefit from, from the use of ALPRs in many ways. Many of the commercial areas along five-eighty have been the target for theft. In many cases, suspects use stolen cars to commit these crimes. Fixed ALPR systems would immediately notify officers if a stolen vehicle entered the area so officers can move into that area. This would give officers a better chance of catching the suspects, or at least preventing additional crimes. Research has also shown that many suspects use five-eighty to enter the city for purpose of committing crime. For example, in the year twenty fifteen, there were ninety suspects arrested in one commercial area near five-eighty. Of those, eighty-seven were not from Livermore. Placing fixed ALPR systems near five-eighty will assist in apprehension and identification of suspects. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Captain Young. Any questions of staff, my council members? Not yet. I'd like to take a public comment then. I have two cards tonight. Andrew Barker is first.
Good evening, Council and staff. I appreciate that the police needs tools to enforce the law, and I appreciate the work Chief Harris and the Livermore Police Department do in keeping us secure. However, there is a balance we need to strike between privacy and security, as the presentation suggested. Some of the materials that support this resolution in your packet say that there's a ratio of about a thousand to one, a thousand innocent drivers whose records are stored in this database for every one alert. Now, if that one alert is a kidnapped child or a stolen car, perhaps that's an appropriate balance. But if that one alert is a lapsed registration, then perhaps not. So I'm suggesting that council make two modifications to its resolution tonight. The first modification I'd like to see is to require the police department to make an annual report about this technology that would tell the council and us in the public, the voters, the number of records that were created each year, the kind of number of alerts, and the kind of alert, kind of arrests, the kind of crimes that this system might prevent, so that future councils can determine if this balance between privacy and law enforcement tools is actually being struck, if it is actually being an effective tool. I'd like to see that actually required in the resolution. The second thing I'd like to see you do tonight is to give the police department guidance in terms of what kind of things they're looking for in this alert. So if you read your materials closely, one of the things that might trigger an alert is called a suspect vehicle. And I have searched the California Highway Patrol website, I've searched the California code for a definition of suspect vehicle, and I haven't found one. So one of my concerns is that what you might mean by suspect vehicle is perhaps a vehicle that's tags haven't been renewed in time. And we know that this kind of harassment of motorists who haven't renewed their tags can be a way of racial profiling, and it can be a way of profiling poor, poor residents. And we would, I'd like to see the council specifically prohibit in this resolution that kind of profiling. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. And next card is David McGaughan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and council members. My concern with this item are with the retention of the data. Since I have personally experienced Livermore police lying and manipulating evidence and accusations against me, I find the assertions that the data won't be abused laughable. But let's consider the benefits that are stated. To locate stolen cars or find missing children, you don't need data a year old. In fact, you really don't need to store the data of that passing vehicle at all you compare to the database of the vehicles you're looking for. The strategic, you know, you could argue there's maybe a window that, before the crimes discovered, but that's going to be very short. Now, strategic sites, yes, you might benefit from tracking vehicles that visit a site multiple times over an extended period of time. But that's a very specific site, and a very limited amount of data would be retained for that. But the other use is where you might get benefit from this correlation, which is exactly what they did with NSA cellphone records and all that. It's pulling these things together that really is where the problems come in, because you can really construct pretty much anybody's activities. You're really going to need a pervasive coverage. So you're going to end up having to put ones in front of everybody's churches, among other things. And before everyone thinks, well, what's wrong with that? It'll keep us safe. Let's consider the chilling effect surveillance states have had on their populations. Sadly, the real practical use for the five-eighty cameras would be simply to compare the time it takes you to pass the two cameras and mail out feeding tickets to the offenders. Perfect legitimate police action, and better yet, no need to actually officially, you know, an officer to do anything. You could just have the system send it out. Now, let's consider the quote by Justice Alito in the two thousand twelve Jones v. U.S. decision that was in the packet. Society's expectation has been that law enforcement agents and others would not, and indeed, in the main, simply could not secretly monitor and catalog every single movement of an individual's car for a very long period. Yet, that is what this system in the end will provide. Law enforcement certainly would like to monitor us all the time if they could. The only thing that's stopping them now is implementation. There were some very serious privacy concerns rained in the information, raised in the information packet. I would like you, the council, to hold off until these very serious issues can, the storage of the data can be addressed. They're still discussing the guidelines, as far as I understand. And at a minimum, please reduce the retention time to be consistent with what I Oakland has, which I believe is three months, not a year. At least cut it back. Finally, let me share an experience of my friend related to me. He went on a ride-along with one of our police officers. And during the ride-along, an officer made a dozen or so stops, but issued zero tickets. That's right, oh for twelve. Now, your chief would probably say the officer was being magnanimous with this discretion and letting everybody go with a warning. To me, it looks like it's randomly stopping people to check their papers. Is this Livermore or not to Germany? Thank you.
Thank you, David, for the input. Questions of staff?
Excuse me, can I speak to this issue?
Yes, please give your card to the clerk.
You know, we have a wonderful police force, I believe, and a wonderful police chief, but we cannot, we cannot guarantee that we're going to have these honest, caring people doing their job, you know, on a regular basis. I agree with the speakers before me that there is too much of a potential right now with certain aspects of data collection, and I would hate to see it abused. And I really ask that you seriously, seriously look at the issue and, and think about scenarios. You know, I'm sure the Dukes of Hazzard had a premise, you know. A lot of sitcoms, you know, they do fall on real stories sometimes. And I really, really, really have seen a couple of instances where people have abused their power. And so really, when you're thinking about data storage and information, make sure that this could never at all in any way be abused. And if it could be, you know, what sort of repercussions a citizen, a good citizen might have if, you know, they were targeted in such a way where this was, the situation was abused. And again, I personally have had pretty much good experiences with law enforcement in Livermore, but there were a couple of times when, you know, I, you know, questioned how I was treated. And think of the level of education. We have a wonderful academy, but maybe we need to step up class, coursework, and education for people who will be, you know, responsible for the, this data. And thanks again for allowing me to speak on this.
Thank you, Connie. Questions of staff?
I just have a couple of questions for you. They bring up a couple of issues that I had questions on as well. And so just wanted some clarification on what is a suspect, suspect vehicle? I would assume a suspect vehicle would be a vehicle without, with unregistered plates or expired plates, because it is illegal to drive a vehicle that's not licensed. Or a car that's wanted for whatever reason, an Amber Alert or registered stolen. Are there anything else? And expired tags. Is there anything else that would cause a vehicle to be called a suspect vehicle?
There's, yeah, there's many things that could, you know, qualify for that. But as far as the registration, that's not something that, that we would enter in the system or track. It would take too much officer time, and, and that's just not something that we're concerned about at this point. The, the main concerns are, are some of the property crimes and the theft that, that we're seeing, along with some of the violent crimes. And, and this provides a good tool for those sorts of things.
Right. So how would you define suspect vehicles? Just vehicles that are known to be involved in a crime and/or stolen? Or is there, what makes a car a suspect vehicle?
Yeah, a suspect vehicle obviously is one that is reported stolen, or is involved in other, some other type of crime. If there's, if there's a felony investigation and a vehicle is identified and a license number is identified by witnesses or the victim, and an agency confirms that, they, they could enter that into the system so that if it flags, you know, we would, we would know. And we would know, associate that vehicle with the investigation, a felony investigation, not registration violations. You know, the things that are going to be in here are the, the stolen cars, the, the wanted felons, people associated with felonies, not misdemeanors, and certainly not infractions.
So that kind of leads into my second question then, and I think you pretty much already answered it, is the record retention policy. A year does seem quite long, however, if we're also using it for investigative purposes, I could see that. What are your thoughts on the year versus the three months that were suggested by somebody else with, it'd be a shame to pay for this technology, and three months and two days after the records were expunged, a vehicle drives into town that's known for an investigation. So would like you to speak on that.
Yeah. Well, the NICRIC has a policy on retention use, and we are fortunately able to store the data on their servers, which otherwise would cost us a significant amount of money to purchase the servers and to keep them protected. And their policy is for a year. So we're going with their policy. But I also believe it's important to keep the information in there for up to a year. And again, we don't search this for anything other than felony criminal activity. So if there was a homicide, or a violent crime of some kind that we are investigating, and like I said, we had a license plate to go on, or even a partial license plate to go on, and we could enter it into this system, it would be a real good tool for law enforcement to point us in the direction of where we could potentially locate that suspect vehicle. So it is very helpful to have the information in there for up to a year. So that, that's, that's the reason for the recommendation.
And I'm guessing at this price tag, this is not paying for a ton of cameras. I'm guessing a very small number of cameras, two or?
Yes, that's correct. More than two, but less than five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
I don't, I can't, we ask, we're asking for a hundred thousand, and so I don't have the exact cost, but not more than probably five at this point.
Counselor Ms. Podolsky?
So based on that line of questioning, you'd be comfortable if we threw in some type of wording that would say only for felony activities, you know, not, not including misdemeanors or infractions? I would, I've never let my registration lag so far as to know if it becomes a felony at some point. So I'm not, you know, a hundred percent familiar with that, but...
Yeah. So that would have to do with what types of crimes we search for.
Right.
Because the, the system is going to take a picture of every license of every vehicle that goes past the camera. The question there, you're asking is, are we going to inquire, or are we going to set alerts that would, or, or set specific thresholds that would alert us for certain things? Now, we don't control, we're going to get alerts for every jurisdiction that enters anything into the, into the, the NCIC system. So any wanted vehicle, any stolen vehicle that's entered into the system, from anywhere in California, that comes through our town, we're going to get a hit on it. We don't control what they put in there, what types. But I could tell you that I would be comfortable with, with a policy that required our personnel, if they're going to search the data, it needs to be for a felony or, or other violent misdemeanor.
Okay.
Brandishing a weapon, those types of things. Missing children, missing, missing adults, people that are at risk, those issues, those types of issues.
Okay. So, yeah, I'd be interested in, in including that. And then, you know, after the cameras are installed, one of the items that I was going to bring up was some type of status or progress report as to how they're working. You know, something that Mr., Mr. Barker, I think it was, mentioned. I, I don't know the exact details and how detailed we can go into it. You know, I don't necessarily even want to know where the cameras are installed and, and, you know, between two and five, okay. But, you know, just whatever information we can receive after a year to hear the, the success of the system, or if it's just not working out. It's just a brief, you know, evaluation. I don't know if that needs to be a future council item or memo that the public can access, you know, something along those lines, so.
Certainly. I'd be, be happy to do that.
So I've got a question. You know, we're, we're talking about the efficacy of the system. And could you say again, how long has this system been in place, and how many cities use it, and have there so far been any negative issues?
Well, as far as the technology, it's been available for at least a decade. And obviously, it's, it's gotten better as, as technology does. And I would, I don't know for certain, but if I had to take a best guess, I would estimate that there's probably seventy-five to eighty percent of agencies use automated license plate readers. And it has been extremely effective in, you know, in, in locating stolen vehicles, and locating wanted fugitives, and locating missing children, missing persons. There's cases, you may even have a few as examples. But I, I know, for example, Sacramento Police Department recently implemented a number of ALPRs and surveillance cameras combined. And in the first year, they located over seven hundred stolen vehicles as a result of the cameras, and over one hundred wanted felons, fugitives.
So the question is, I'm, I'm pretty sure it works. I mean, you can read license plates from outer space, right? So, right? And they do that. So the, no, the question, so technically, I don't think there's any issue here. What I was saying more of the, have there been any citizens' complaints? have there been any citizens' complaints, anything that's would, you know, have any hint of any misuse? Has there been, I mean, this has now been in place, multiple agencies for many years. Is there any evidence of any kind of misuse? I mean, we're, you know, we're aware of the bizarre behavior in Kensington, right? But is there, but that's not related to this necessarily. So is there any evidence? Because I, I think that people will naturally make question this, but is there any evidence of all the years that this thing has ever been misused?
Yeah. You know, I, I can't speak to every occasion for every agency, but nothing's come into my mind right now as a, as an example of a misuse of automated license plate reader technology. You know, officers have broad authority and certainly the opportunity, you know, they, they have at their access DMV records, all kinds of records, criminal records. So this is, this is another type of record that potentially, if in the wrong hands, could be abused. But, but I can't, I can't think of an example here where, where one comes to mind.
Question on this initial deployment. Now I'm a little listening to, to the oral discussion, a little unclear. Will these be mobile readers, fixed readers, or some combination of fixed, but we can relocate them from time to time?
So we already have several mobile readers. These we're asking for would be fixed, and they would be at these fixed locations.
And is it fair to say in a broad sense, the fixed locations are very high-volume areas, not the downtown, the movie theater, the bowling alley?
That's correct. They're very, very high volume. And again, as we discussed in the, in the staff report, areas where people come into town often to commit crimes. And we're looking for a head start. If we could post an officer at these intersections, they have the same legal authority, they would have the legal authority to run every single license plate that comes by them. And so really, the camera is just a force multiplier for that. It just, it just increases exponentially the efficiency. And so it's in the public space, they're on the public roadway, and it just increases our ability to locate and identify and get a head start on heading to an area if, if, if it tells us that there's a wanted or stolen vehicle in the area.
Okay, thank you. I know, for the audience, I discussed with the chief this afternoon the data. And I am pleased to say that the data is not being stored or directly physically accessible locally. And what the public may not have understood from the presentation is the Regional Intelligence Center is a post-9/11 creation to bring local and federal and state law enforcement together to catch the very exact thing that happened in New York where people slipped through the system. And I think we've all lost a degree of privacy in deploying that technology. And it's hard to say to what degree we're safer because of it. But it's a move the nation has made since 9/11. I had not severe concerns, but concerns about this. And I think many of us in the news today are really more attuned to the apple versus federal government discussion and drawing our own personal lines about what is privacy and what is protection. And part of me doesn't want to see further incursions, and part of me understands that if it was my loved one, or my felony crime that was trying to be closed and persecuted to finality, I would want to some degree of surveillance tool available to catch these, these vehicles in a more easy manner. So I think we are balancing, if the maker of the motion wants to include two things, having the police department formal policy come back before us, just as an informational memo, so we can see the, the final policy. And also, I think in part of your annual report to the department, I'd like to see these metrics and other things, body cameras, use of force. I, I think when you come before us annually to update us, it's one of several important metrics that we in the public ought to be kept appraised of.
So I, I would just add, we don't have a motion yet, I guess, but the, you know, my point of view is that the, that the safeguards are sufficient, just given on the history, the, that the benefits far outweigh any even just perceived risks, really. And that, I think that we should also keep in mind that this is something that the council can always revoke, should there ever be a, in a case. So this isn't a, a final thing. So we retain the authority here. So it's incumbent upon the citizens to make sure we do our jobs. And we're certainly, this council for sure is interest, is providing the oversight. So I think with the reports that we're talking about, the policy's in place, I think we should go forward. Well, I therefore move this item be approved with the caveats that we've said with respect to clarifying the policies and the reporting.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? I'll move the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much for the public, for your comments. The next item is by staff, discussion and direction regarding the 2016 City Council Livermore State and Federal Legislative Platform. You're on.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor and council members. I'm Donna Pontow, Senior Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. Before you this evening is the 2016 State and Federal Legislative Platform for your review and approval. This document highlights the position of the city council on important issues that align with community goals and policy documents. Hundreds of bills are introduced each year in Sacramento and DC, and city staff monitors these that impact Livermore. The platform provides direction and allows staff to quickly respond to bills and other developments in time-sensitive situations. The 2016 documents includes one new category, and that is libraries, in order to support funding opportunities. The returning categories are city local control, fiscal stability, housing, planning, and sustainability, infrastructure rehabilitation, job creation and economic development, public safety, science, technology, and innovation, transportation and parking, and finally, water. Now, I would like to suggest a change for clarity from the document you have on page 182 for the last item under housing. I'd like to flip the clauses in the last phrase so that it would read, "For all economic segments of the population, as long as they do not create an unfunded mandate or conflict with local land use authority and financial stability." The platform document is posted on the city's website at www.cityoflivermore.net/legislation for the community's information. Again, staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution approving the 2016 Livermore State and Federal Legislative Platform with changes. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Donna. Any questions of staff before I take a public comment? We do have some. Okay. On this item, Anthony Rangel, if I'm close to pronouncing that.
Hello, City Council. I am the founding chapter president of Grow for Vets at Livermore, California, as well as Nature's Remedy Collective. I do not feel that the city of Livermore's stance on the state and federal legislative platform is correct. I stand before you as proof. Grow for Vets is a national, nonpartisan, 501(c)(19) nonprofit organization headquartered in Colorado. The mission of Grow for Vets is to help save the more than 50 veterans who die each day from suicide and prescription drug overdose. Grow for Vets provides veteran heroes with safe alternative to deadly prescription drugs. We connect veterans with the knowledge and resources necessary to obtain and grow their own cannabis for the treatment of their medical conditions. We strive to raise awareness by eliciting the public's aid and support in assuring that all injured and wounded veterans receive the respect and dignity of life that they deserve. As the president of Nature's Remedy Collective, I strive for the exact same respect, dignity, and safe access to safe medicine for all Livermore and Tri-Valley patients. I do not believe safe access will come from either prohibition or the state bullying municipalities into hasty regulations, which is why I spoke on behalf of Livermore and Tri-Valley patients at the Joint Assembly Committee hearing on AB 21 in support of removing the March 1st deadline for local control ordinances. Since March of last year, I have been asking the city to allow the discussion of amending local ordinances and creating the responsible regulations that Livermore residents deserve. We will be submitting formal requests for an audience before the council at the earliest possible date. As some of you have already known through your interactions with me, I firmly believe in respectfully standing before each and every one of you and telling you exactly what I'm doing in our city, and every step of the way, and what we propose. I ask of the council, please keep an open mind when considering these items, and know that I am available to answer any and all questions you may have regarding this. As we are not trying to hide, we are simply trying to live. Livermore veterans and their families have sacrificed enough. They deserve access to safe medicine rather than deadly drug cocktails that are killing more than 50 American heroes every single day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anthony. Further questions, comments by staff? I have one, actually two on behalf of the mayor, but before that, on the legislative platform. The mayor requested, actually on page 181, on this issue, that staff look at the wording to be more than just monitoring on medical marijuana. And the council has stated its research position and, and dealing with it as the state law and the March 1 issues debated in the state. So if we could be a bit more specific, that we're just not monitoring in a, in an idle mode, but actively, staff is working on the legal issues at hand, as well as the changes with the state. Second item on page 186, under the transportation policy, now that the FAST Act has been passed, could we include a, a brief comment about tracking legislation on railroad quiet zones and the funding to establish railroad quiet zones? It's already being discussed, as we know, by several of our newer residents downtown. And we were frankly taken aback by the length of time and the cost of railroad quiet zones. And the mayor would like to be sure we're tracking that as part of the legislative platform also.
Vice Mayor Gary, that legislation passed on December 4th, and it was signed by the president. So could we change it to support implementation of the act with respect to that issue?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further comments? I'll take a motion.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And for clarity, the motion didn't include the comments?
That was absolutely my intent.
Second, thank you.
We'll now move on to item seven, council committee reports. Council committee reports matters initiated. Staff, anything initiated by staff tonight? I'll go to my right first. Councilmember Warner?
Okay. Last week, I attended the Water Policy Roundtable, and I thought that was very productive to kind of understand what our options were with respect to increasing the reliability of the supply. And so I, some good outcomes, one of which was to study the feasibility of using the treated water, but not direct injection, but through, you know, intermediate ways, which can be, you know, greatly lowers any possible risk. So I think that's a good path. The other thing that I'm certainly a proponent of is that we really understand what our options are for increasing supply. We put the emphasis there as well as not just banking on the twin tunnels as a way to solve it. Other than that, that's, that concludes what I have to say.
Thank you. Councilman Spodasky?
Sure. On February 10th, I attended the first meeting of the newly-named Altamont Regional Rail Work Group. Great acronym, it's ARG, kind of pirate-y. But it's the group that has formed to research options to connect BART to ACE, and also how to accelerate and encourage the building of BART to Isabel here in Livermore. We've identified that, that our area is now defined as a mega-region in the country, one of 10, I believe. And the missing component to having heavy rail connect the entire mega-region comes over the Altamont. So eventually, if the connection is successful, you'll be able to take rail from Sacramento to San Francisco, heavy rail, or from Modesto to San Jose. But it all connects here in, in Livermore, the Altamont. So we'll be meeting, I believe, every other month initially, as we develop goals, objectives, and general strategies. And then earlier today, I attended the LAVTA Projects and Services Subcommittee, where once again, we discussed the, as I've been reporting for about six months now, the comprehensive operations analysis. And so, but what this is, it's a complete restructuring and redesigning of the entire Wheels bus system. So please pay attention. In the next few months, we will have public hearings with the final proposed routes. So please watch for that and participate, either online or in person at the public hearings. We will be looking at, at completely restructuring some of the routes, and hopefully, without guaranteeing anything, because it's all still in the, the, the public hearing phase. But one of the goals would be to have 15-minute service to the BART station from Livermore, touching, hopefully, starting at the lab, going through downtown, going up, past Los Pecidos College, and then meeting the BART trains. So that's, that's the potential for our rapid to become increasingly, how should I say?
Rapid.
Actually rapid, bad grammar, more rapid-er? I don't know how, rapid-er, the rapid-er. Now it sounds like a dinosaur. But anyway, so that's, that's coming up in the next few months.
Councilman Turner?
I have nothing to report, although I might have a matter to be initiated, I'm not sure. It's a question for the city attorney. We've brought this issue up many, many times, and I'd like clarification on where the current council direction is in regards to medicinal marijuana. I know this is all coming before us at some point this spring. It's been my intent in the past that we actually have an initiative come before the council where we vote on whether or not to repeal the ban on dispensaries. I do not know if our current direction was that specific.
The last direction I've been operating under is to research the state of the state's regulations, which now includes the Compassionate Use Act, the Medical Marijuana Safety Act, and MRSA, the Medical Marijuana Safety Regulation Act. We're in the process of bringing that back to you as the council to consider. The last direction was to identify those areas where you have local control and what's reserved to the state. And we're looking to bring that back to you in April.
Okay. Then, given if I can get support from my peers, I would like to, at that meeting or a meeting shortly thereafter, have a, an initiative come to the council so that we can actually take a vote on whether or not to repeal our ordinance. But I don't know if I have support from my council members.
Can I ask a question? What, how does the possible ballot initiatives for this fall enter into it?
Right now with, right now with the Secretary of State, there are well over 20 initiatives dealing with marijuana, both from a recreational perspective as well as medicinal. Those decisions will not be made until the November election.
So what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is that, thank you for trying to clarify what we're, what we're trying to do here. But I had the impression that because of that uncertainty is what they might hold, that we were gonna, we would need to see that before we started getting into our own revisions of things.
My rationale for bringing it up now is that I'd really rather set the legislation here before it goes to the state and we lose our ability to grandfather. So, and every year, we wait, and we wait, and we wait because something else comes up. And so I would really love for us to actually take a stand, one way or the other. I don't know which way the vote would go. But where this council makes a decision whether or not we want dispensaries in our town.
So staff, one question real quick. You mentioned the, lose the ability to grandfather. Is that a, could, could you say more about that risk? Not you, the staff?
So right now, the primary issue we were faced with, with regard to... So right now, the primary issue we were faced with with regard to whether the state will lose, well, I'm sorry, whether the city will lose local control is when you adopt your, your ordinance relative to cultivation. That legislation has since been removed from the books, but we did not know how the state would react on that. As far as the grandfathering, depending on which initiative, if any of them pass, would dictate that. Some of them take all local control away and leave it with the state. Some of them are not much different from MRSA. But it all, that all depends on what is actually adopted by the voters, if any, in November. What our goal was to return to you, to lay that platform before you, explain what regulations are being pursued by the state with regard to cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, testing, as well as what authorities left to you as the city council locally with regard to regulating the cultivation, regulating the manufacturer and processing, regulating dispensaries. Those variety of factors we brought to you, as well as an explanation, was an overview of the variety of legislation that's pending before the council, I'm sorry, before the state on an initiative basis.
So our, our expectation based on your previous action was that in April, you would, at that point, as a council, give us direction on wish, whether you wished us to do further work, exploration and creation of legislation in any of those three areas. So it could range from essentially, "Thank you, and we're done", to "We would like detailed regulations on each of those three areas", and giving us direction on what that is, to even a further issue, which is "We'd like detailed regulations, and we'd ultimately like the voters to weigh in on that here locally." That would be the range of possible direction that we would expect from the council at that time. You all asked for essentially the playing field, as it were, as of the moment we give you that information. You are correct. This is, to say this is an active area is a massive understatement at the state level. But what our intention is, is to give you from a policy standpoint, what the status of the law is at that moment, and essentially be ready for any direction that you'd like us to ultimately pursue. At that point, we'd go away and whatever ultimately the council as a majority sort of gave us direction on, we'd create that legislation for your subsequent review.
So I guess where I would come out on this is that, you know, we've got to strike the balance between being ready to act in, in the right moment, but not wasting our time. So there's some way, and I guess what you're saying is, we'll have a chance to make a call on that in April after we get some further information. So I'm willing to wait until April.
That's correct.
I guess in support of Councilwoman Turner's point, let me try to restate what I think both parties just said. I, I think we all wanted our maneuvering room, such as it is, brought back before us sooner rather than later. That's going to occur in April. I would support the request that what's brought before us i- is not just information, but what actionable steps in the near term we could choose, if any. In other words, we shouldn't have to tell you in April, "Come back with an actionable step", but we're going to define in April, if we want action at all, which one of the three venues we want definitive research to be concluded on. And I think if that satisfies Councilwoman Turner's, you know, request that we, we proceed to step, to step into this, is that a fair restatement of what you're asking for?
That's a fair restatement. My biggest concern is, you know, we're fighting for local control, but we're waiting for the state. Do we or do we not want local control? And if we want local control, we should act. And I'm concerned that we're going to get a big report in April that's going to be like, "Here's what the state wants or the state's doing", and still we will be nowhere closer to any action. So I would like, at that meeting or shortly thereafter, the ability to say, or for staff to be ready, should the council want for us to get an ordinance in a reasonable timeframe that doesn't say November after the election, or 2018, or whenever, that we can make a choice on whether or not, for all three of these issues. So I'm very concerned that we're just going to get information, "I want action", and so that's what I'm going for.
Yeah, and I would say that when we, and the first step to that isn't necessarily the preferred option in each of those three areas, but we might need to understand what our options are, right, for each area. What's the spectrum of things we might want to spend, and just broadly outline it.
Fine-tuned direction that we don't just want to report, we want options to choose from.
Yes, and, and that is our intent. So, just to paraphrase here, for example, on dispensaries, your options would range from a prohibition, you know what that looks and feels like. Essentially, a limitation on the total number, a limitation on the square footage of them, a limitation on how they can be located in your community versus sensitive receptors. A combination of those three tools. So you will get a menu, it will not be a, a ordinance, but essentially you'll say, "Ah, I can regulate these four areas or these five areas. Hmm, oh, I hadn't thought about that. All right, staff, do a little more work on this." I don't write it, want it next to the high school, for example. You know, I don't want it co-located there. And so on cultivation, you might say something as clear as, "We prohibit it", a second one that cultivation can only happen inside a building. The building has to be secured in some way. Those are sorts of, of examples of the thinking that staff has on the menu of options that would return to you. And essentially then, before going too far down any one of those avenues, we'd like to hear that the council say, "Ah, in this case, we'd like to explore, you know, A and C, and throw in a little D and do a little research on E", and that would be very helpful for us to bring back something in the neighborhood of what all y'all might want to adopt.
Councilwoman Spodasky?
And, and not to go too far down the rabbit hole, but then that opens up the, you know, the issues of, of, of regulation of the actual product itself. And, you know, is that something that we do on a local level? Can we, you know, remembering that when we create these regulations, do we have the ability to enforce them? That's another, another question that I always have. We can regulate anything at any time, you know, within a certain parameter, but being able to enforce them, where that's more of my interest in the, the medical marijuana and what's happening on the state. I think the regulation of the product itself is more of a state, a, a state responsibility, and they have the ability. You know, I'm talking edibles and the, the amount of, of, you know, the, the marijuana that's distributed to the edibles. We don't have the, the capability of going and, and, and monitoring to that level for a city, but I'd want to make sure that it's regulated on, on some level. And if they're talking about that at the state, that's something that I would want to wait for before we kind of go down that road. So it is, it's, it's multiple layers, and I understand your, your frustration because we talk about it, we have people coming before us, and we just want to act on it. We want to do something, but at the same time, make sure that we have all our ducks lined up before tackling the issue.
I think we've, we've come close enough to discussing the issue without discussing it, so.
Yeah, I think you're about as far as you can.
I think staff heard from us, and we clearly heard what staff intends to do. And I didn't hear any disagreement with what staff intends to do, so I think we and staff are on the same page on this one.
Yeah. You are collectively correct. There are big pieces of this that we can never regulate effectively at the local level. A shorthand way, and then we're just going to sort of stop, is we're talking about time, place and manner. Those are the great big things we're talking about in each of these areas. But not down, it's sort of like a liquor store can go here and be open from these hours to that area. It's not how to make bourbon. We won't do that level of regulation, you know, at the local level, and we will bring back some options for you.
Anything else?
That's enough for now.
That's enough for now. Only meetings I have to report was just in the last two weeks, just one with staff on the, the BART design issues that we've all been participating in individually. And I do have a matters initiated request, if I have support up here. There's been comments from the public on how we've been handling public comment at the beginning of the meeting. And in one instance, I for one made mention of the fact that we had a standing placeholder on an agenda item with no actual agenda content. In other words, we just got in the habit of listing categorical things without actually putting something behind them for public input. Staff's now remedied that by taking those placeholders off future agendas, starting with tonight. However, the public is still concerned that we may have stepped, a step too far. Certainly, what we did, in, in my governmental experience, doesn't rise anything close to, to the district attorney. But, but I think staff and, and the public knows there's always sometimes reason to get a second opinion and to have absolute clarity. So with support, if I have support, I would just request that we ask the city attorney to get an outside legal counsel opinion on the advice he's already given us, and just bring that back to us in writing, that the way we've been handling pub, public comment on the agenda topics as the agenda is constructed is consistent with California Government Code for General Law Cities.
Clarification, if I remember correctly, you already did that, you, you already spoke with somebody outside and got other opinions on this and reported on that at last meeting, or am I remembering wrong?
No, I provided written responses to the public explaining the legal rationale, explaining that as Vice Mayor Gary had explained, there are no items being considered at that point, so you're not legally required to take comments. And we have remedied the situation as a city. Had you been considering the appointment, say, to the board for the library, for the Livermore Pleasant Fire Department, then those would be the focus of the, the comments, but there was nothing to comment upon.
So I, I have a question. I'm not sure that this issue warrants spending a lot of money. What would that cost?
The cost for a second opinion? This is a fairly well-trawed area of law, well-traveled. I don't think it's going to cost that much. We could probably do it for less than $10,000, maybe five.
I, if we had that kind of money hanging around, I'd, I'd spend it elsewhere.
Could we get an opinion from the league? In an inexpensive fashion?
From the League of California Cities. They do have various committees. I can explore that and see if they're Brown Act Committee. This would be something they'd be willing to consider. Or see if they've had any other papers that have already opined on this.
That's fine. My, my suggestion is just a bit more of a broader outside research collaboration at this point is fine. Okay, with that, anything further from my peers? With that, we are adjourned to a special city council meeting next Monday, February 29th, 7:00 p.m., the council chambers for a BART-only specific discussion, and then the next regular council meeting will be on March 14th at 7:00 p.m. Thank you very much, and good night.